Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's cabinet meeting on the twenty ninth of September. Various items on the agenda. Just go through a few housekeeping things first. There are no members of the public here tonight at the moment. If there had been, we would be saying that if anybody wanted to be avoiding the cameras, let us know and that we would then deal with them accordingly. The cameras, that is. If there is a fire alarm go off, then you go via the exit door, run down to the community square and we will see you there and deal with the fire separately. And the last thing is there is a Part B item in the agenda. At that point, members of the public would be asked to leave if they were here, as they're not. We don't need to be concerned at that point and I would confirm there is nothing at the moment in Part B anyway. So I don't remember the rest of the applet that they would normally give us on a sheet. I think that covers all the key points. So we were happy with that. Thank you. We then move to item two, apologies for absence. We're all here, so we're okay, acceptable. Item three, to sign this minutes of previous meeting, have they agreed? Would they be signed and to be done? Item four, anything from members of the cabinet to declare as matters arising or declaration purposes? Nothing. Thank you. Item five, to consider anything from Part A into Part B or private part of the meeting or anything coming the other way. There is nothing in Part B and there's nothing I suggest goes to Part B. Are we agreed with that? Fine, thank you. Item six, delegated decisions of cabinet members. Have any of you made a decision that haven't otherwise been notified to all members in the public? No? Fine, thank you. That then moves us neatly on to item seven. Housing council asset strategy. Nicole, please.
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of the report is to present Cabinet with the Council Housing Asset Management Strategy two thousand and twenty five to twenty eight to ensure that the council's housing stock is fit for purpose and financially viable. As Cabinet will be aware, our housing stock represents one of the council's most valuable assets and largest liability in investment terms. The condition, comfort and security of the council's properties is also of utmost importance to tenants and we pride ourselves on being a good landlord. The strategy is based on a good understanding of stock condition and relative asset performance that will be used to drive investment plans and support evidence-based decision-making. Within the document, it outlines the objectives for the strategy, ensuring that we focus on making informed decisions around stock investment. The objectives are putting our tenants first and ensuring tenant engagement in shaping and delivering our services, investing intelligently in our homes, ensuring they're of high quality, ensuring they're safe and ensuring that they're warm and sustainable. The strategy also confirms that these objectives have been influenced by numbers of drivers for change such as aging assets, modernising and maintaining the performance and safety of our aging asset base, plus the need to improve the energy efficiency of the stock, tenant expectations, keeping our assets aligned with the expectations of our tenants, financial investment becoming more efficient in the way we manage our capital investment for modernisation of the housing stock and legislative and regulatory change, which there is much of, meeting the standards set out by both a regulator of social housing and the Building Safety Regulator. This strategy will be underpinned by robust governance and performance reporting arrangements, many of which already underpin the council's corporate plan and our tenants will play a key role in shaping our future standards and services and holding us to account for performance and decisions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Obviously, a very important strategy as far as we're all concerned because it does deal with their housing stock. I think you touched on something that is worthwhile drawing out, I think, for tonight to remind people, particularly those who may be watching this presentation, is that this is one of the biggest, not the, probably not the biggest now, but one of the biggest deadlines we have on our books and it's one of those figures that people keep referring to of how much the council's in debt. The fact is, this debt is based against the capital asset of the housing stock itself, which is worth substantially more in the open market than the debt against it and the debt is entirely held within the housing revenue account, which is the tenant's account and cannot be subsidised, made up for in payment terms or otherwise money put against it by the general fund. So it doesn't affect the general rate plan. I think sometimes we fail to mention that and to explain to people that this debt is well managed, it's substantially gone down over the years. It was a debt that we were forced to take by a previous government on stock we thought we owned, but they said that we didn't. So, but it's been because of the way you've managed the stock, we've got fire alarm systems in place, protection in place. We're making sure that the buildings are well secured, maintained and we're improving the PPC ratings up to C. So giving everybody a warm, safe place to live, all done by the tenants' own money. And I think sometimes we've got to mention that and refer back to it. Strategy is a great one. It is for the tenants. The fact you're including them, I think it's a very good thing. So I'll stop speaking there. There was no question in there, so forgive me. But Karina, as a lead on housing, have you anything you'd like to say on the report?
Yeah, I think it's a very good report. It's very clear. Obviously, the consumer standards that came in last year in twenty twenty four are really important. The engagement of the tenants is crucial and I'm really impressed by the way that you've reached out in lots of different formats and media to include the tenants and to hear their voice. So thank you so much to you and your team, Nicole. I think you've done a really good job and this is really well-written document. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. First, I'm going to endorse what you said about the asset debt and I'm going to go one stage further for my chair because I think some people deliberately seek to cause mischief with our tenants and with our residents by saying that this is almost like traditional council day, as if we sort of borrowed loads of money to then fritter away on other bits and pieces when actually what this is is we literally had to buy housing that we thought was already in the public sector for the council to do that. So it isn't, it isn't as if there's a massive load of money sitting there or we've just borrowed loads for something else. It is, it is something that I think has made mischief off occasionally in certain media outlets, in particular or social media outlets, saying that we owe all this money for this. So I think it's always important we can clarify that. My question, Chair, is in regards to page twenty three, which is about the business intelligence and data management. And my fear of having been an officer myself for many years is that tends to mean dashboards and scorecards and we're going to do everything out of context. And if it's, if it's not rag rated, we don't agree, nor if it's not anything that doesn't, you know, on a computer, then we don't, we don't assess it. Just to tease it out, as the chair has done with something else earlier, can we assure that we're looking at a range of data, that we're looking at quality of data, we're looking at listening to residents? And it isn't a case of, well, this house is in this category, therefore it must be. It actually will be tailored, tailored data management, not just a computer.
Yes, absolutely. There is obviously a requirement from the regulator of social housing to ensure that we've got up-to-date data on our stock. There is also that requirement to make sure that we've got up-to-date data on our tenant situations as well, so that we can make informed decisions. We are, I would say, as a service, very good at not working in silos when it comes to housing stock, making sure that everything is considered. And a really good example of that is bringing stock condition surveys back in-house and focusing on what appears to be even non-decent or we've got limited information. And that has had such a positive effect on our tenants who've been able to do safeguarding referrals really quickly, deal with things like downsizing, adaptations that may be required. We wouldn't be able to do any of that if we was just relying on the data back in the office.
Funny enough, you just, it's outside of this particular report, but it may be worthwhile having a report to the cabinet committee around the issue of how we do manage the stock. Because I think it's again one of those things that you are routinely doing and yet the media seem to understand why and how we're doing it. You just touched on the fact that we downsized accommodation for people to assist them, not forcing them into doing it. And there is a process, we support them through that process, which hasn't always, we don't repeat enough to get people moving into other stock. We've got new stock coming in Milton Place that may well be sued over people. And also, I'm very conscious in social media, it seems to be alive with news at the moment of things we're doing. And I noticed a piece the other day of people upset about what's happening down in Denton, about some very old concrete buildings that were being pulled down. Our fabbrices were units of housing neglecting to say about the damp, the mildew and all the other problems in them and the heating bills and all going to be renewed with brand-new accommodation of a modern standard that people are going to move into and more of them than there are currently there now. I think that sort of management of the stop is your routinely doing is something that perhaps we don't promote enough. You're doing a great job and we need to bring that out maybe a bit more in, Karina's committed more than just talking about the nuts bolts of the mechanics of what we're doing. Sometimes the personal side of it is getting lost, I feel. Will you be happy with that, Karina, coming in? Thank you. Any other questions or observations? No? Can we accept the strategy then? Yep, superb. Thanks very much. That then, thank you for that, Nicole. We move then to the council tax reduction scheme, please, and that's with Andrew.
Thank you, Chair. So the report in front of you is in respect to the council tax reduction scheme. The council currently operates two schemes, one for low-income pensioners households, which is a national scheme whereby successful applicants can be awarded up to a hundred percent council tax support. And then the second scheme is a local scheme for low-income working age households. Under this scheme, successful applicants can be awarded up to eighty percent support. Therefore, they're required to pay a minimum of twenty percent council tax. With households' costs rising, the minimum payment has become increasingly difficult for some families, leading to arrears and additional enforcement. In twenty four, twenty five, only eighty-one point six percent of council tax was collected from CTR households in year compared with ninety-four point seven percent overall. This creates hardship for residents and additional administration for the council. So this report is specifically about consulting about proposed changes to the local scheme for low-income working age households. The key recommendation is to consult on increasing the maximum level of support for working age claimants from eighty percent to a hundred percent. This would mean that those in the lowest income barrier, income band would no longer pay council tax, removing significant barriers for those already struggling to meet, to make ends meet. It also proposes increasing the rates for bands two and three, and this is shown in the report in three point three on page thirty seven in the pack. Alongside consulting on that, there's also a recommendation around disregarding lump-sum compensation payments, so aligning our local scheme to what happens with national benefits. And in terms of compensation payments, to give you a couple of examples, it's like the Grenfell compensation and also the Horizon Post Office compensation. So these proposals are designed to provide more protection for the lowest income households, simplify the system and reduce administration costs and ensure fairness by disregarding certain national compensation payments. Obviously, there is a financial impact and you'll find this in five point two. The current cost of the working age scheme is around four point nine million. If, after the consultation decision is to change our scheme to uplift the value, that would be an increase in about one million pound. Now, this is shared across the major preceptors, so the cost integration would be around about a hundred and four thousand. Kent County Council is the major preceptor with the biggest amount, is round about, well, just under seven hundred and seventy thousand pound. While this represents an increase, it is expected to reduce enforcement costs, prevent arrears from escalating and ease financial pressures for over four thousand households. In the long term, this creates savings through stability and increased debt collection. So the report before you is seeking approval to proceed with an eight-week consultation. And the proposals we will use go vocal for the consultation to go live the beginning of October. Looking to consult with council taxpayers, those in receipt of CTR, those not in receipts, obviously the major preceptors and also the third sector. Alongside an online consultation, we are looking to do some random letters to those in receipt of CTR and not in receipt. So we've got the opportunity to complete paper forms as well. They said if, if it's agreed that the consultation takes place, then there would be a report come back, back through the cabinet cycle in February with sort of the outcome and proposal. And ultimately, it would go in front of full council at the end of February for consideration of any changes. As I said, the report, there's two recommendations. One is around going out to an eight-week public consultation and then the second recommendation is just looking to delegate the authority to agree final consultation documents. So to delegate authority to the Director of Corporate Services in consultation with the legally effective and portfolio holder for performance administration. Any questions?
Thank you. Before I forget, at the end, I will be putting the two recommendations meeting for approval. So when I say agreed, hopefully in due course you will. So I'll take that as read. I'm proposing them now. But on the issue itself, we're in strange times at the moment. And what I mean by that, people will try and make issue out of the fact we're letting people off aim of the rates, albeit there is a group in our community that are really struggling with their bills. I think we should be doing this. I agree with the consultation. But I think it's also in my mind very clear that we do have to be aware that rate bills have gone up quite a bit over the last fourteen years. But the support from government has gone down over this corresponding period. So the squeeze on council tax bills has become even tougher. So we have to raise the taxes. There's no question we don't increase them. But when people are at the lower end of income streams, they are really struggling and trying to go, in my mind, chasing down twenty, thirty, fifty pound a month as to what they owe us. Administration are doing that. It becomes silly. And I think this is a better solution. Takes the pressure off them. Hopefully, they can improve their financial circumstances as well. But I think we've got to have a very clear message out of this, that if you can afford to pay, you will pay. And we will take you to call. I've got no problem with taking people. Um, we will take you to court. I've got no problem with taking people to court if they choose not to pay the rates bill. If they're capable of paying it, they will pay. We will take them to court, there's no ifs or buts about that. But where on this scale of income level, people are really struggling, I think that becomes the point where this steps in. And we, we have a duty to our community as well. Um, so for that reason, I'm supporting it. But also coupling it with the fact that if somebody feels, oh, this is an excuse not to pay the bill. You're going to be out of luck because we will send people in to recover that debt. There's no question in my mind that we will be doing that. But with that proviso, any thoughts or comments on this? All happy? I'd be on a session, Mr. Jane.
Yeah, thanks very much, Chair. Um. I want to endorse what, uh, what you say, it's long been the council, this administration's policy to separate those that cannot pay and support them versus those that won't pay. And to target them, um, in, 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 in the proper way, because we want to support our residents that are in dire need, but absolutely those that. Um, feel they shouldn't pay but certainly can afford to pay. Um, it isn't, it isn't right that, um, that burden is not, is not equally shared. Um, and it is worth again noting as we will have to, especially as we start approaching budget time. Recognizing that we're still effectively sitting on the same amount of money that we had in twenty ten pre austerity, um, in twenty twenty five. Um, if our money had gone up by inflation and the one five one officer might tell me if I've got this wrong. Uh, but we should be somewhere in the early twenty million pound revenue budget. Um, not the sort of fourteen point five fifteen that we're currently sitting on, so, you know, that, that's, that's. It's eight million pound deficit approximately that we could be spending every year on residents that we used to get. As a, you know, revenue support grant from the government and while we've had some increases recently. It is nowhere, it come near to fourteen years of being cut, so it's important we do this and do this right, um. And help those we can do. And my one question, Andrew, is on that, on that help, um, section, because we want people to participate in this consultation and. Far too often, sometimes it's very easy to just go, let's do an online consultation when we need to do, uh, we need to do more and I'm, I'm. Sort of heartened to see on page thirty seven, the sort of random, the, the, the range that's there. And my one question's on the randomness of mail shots, um, and while it's good to get a cross section of them, it's all. My, my theories are about the, those, if we're talking cannot pay and won't pay, cannot access, won't access, i- i- in a similar vein. And we've got paper copies that will be available to those of our digital access, but how are we then going to target those? Who cannot access, I suppose, if, if you don't know that this is going on and you're not selected randomly for this. You know, we've got lift, we've got things like this, how do we make sure we're making, we're getting this information out there? So we're, we're, we're getting the people we need, uh, to, to, to consult.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I mean, obviously, we can analyze the data we, we have to target. Particular households that we know probably do not engage digitally. Um, we are, we're also speaking to the third sector and our communities team to again engage with those people. They may have particularly people they're aware of that they can sign posters to, to contact and, and like yourselves, if there are particular organizations. Want to make sure we contact them, please do send me through the details. Um. So we've also got seven and a half thousand people that currently. Use our digital services for e-billing, so again, we can do some targeted email campaigns, we're trying to obviously cover the breadth of digital and paper. Um, but certainly analyzing some of our data, as you say, lift plus the benefit data to target those.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I fully support this scheme. Obviously, this is for the low income families, you know, to support them, not for, you know, the household don't want to pay, so obviously. It's a really good scheme. Uh, obviously, we've got a meeting tomorrow, cabinet meeting for P and A, so. I will ask all other councillors, I'll make sure. Put the word out there so that many houses, hospitals possible can participate in this, you know, consultation, so, bless it, thank you. Uh, thank you, Karina.
Yeah, Andrew, I, I also agree, I think it's a really good scheme. I think the people who can't pay and are on low income. Um, fifty pounds a month or whatever is a huge amount of money and it makes massive difference to those families, I think it's a really good scheme.
Okay, just a question for myself, I know obviously it went to scrutiny, uh, before it came here. Uh, which is something we wanted and obviously it's a good thing to have done, uh, given the subject matter. But I know in the minutes as well that they did have some observations and comments. Um, those observations, comments, reading the report seems to imply they support the paper. Um, but was that as explicit as that or did they have comments that had fundamental issues around the report itself?
Thank you. Now, they, they supported the paper, I think, uh, like yourselves, they were keen that we made sure we got. The consultation to the right organization, the right individuals, had the paper offering as well as the digital, but. All of, uh, the committee was fully supportive of the paper.
So two organizations I saw was the Kadwara and the Salvation Army?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
Can we include the other, um, religious based organizations? Um, it's not just the Kadwara we have here, we have a number of religious organizations that we need to make sure that they're involved with it as well. Um, because we're multicultural here, something we're proud about, so let's include them all.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so with subject to that, um, are we all happy? Agreed with report going forward, consultation, and the second item is for any last minute amendments. Uh, been delegated down, they all agreed. Thank you. That then takes us to item nine, which is the annual performance report. Um, sorry, ten seconds please. If Andrew, Nicole, you want to stay more than happy, if you just stay, if, if you want, don't slip away, equally happy, so you've got some travelling to do. But, um, that being said, item nine, um, annual performance, you're keen to get in there.
Yeah, sorry, Chair. Um, yep, keen as always, uh, annual performance report, members will be very familiar with, uh, the format of this. I think this is the fifth, uh, such report under the previous, uh, corporate plan and the latest one that covers the period twenty twenty three through to twenty twenty seven. Um, so, uh, what you have here is a summary of all of the key performance indicators which underpin. Uh, the corporate plan for the year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, so the outturn against those indicators. There shouldn't be anything in here that members haven't seen already, all of these indicators should have come through cabinet already. Uh, and then subsequently taken to the relevant cabinet committees along with contextual information. Um, to help members understand and scrutinize, uh, those performance, um, figures, Chair. Uh, and hopefully, uh, in the front of the report, you provide an introduction setting out some of the key, uh, performance indicators during the year. That's all I was planning to say, but myself and colleagues, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Ob- obviously, I would say it, but I think it's a good report, um, summarizing the effective work done by officers and other agencies. Um, in the borough, um, I say other agencies, obviously, we, we do have to work and want to work with. The police, social services and the Kent County Council, and all of them have a, an input into some of the outputs of these, so. For example, crime, where crime is, figures have been reported going up or down, we don't actually deal with crime, Mr. Police. Um, but we have the duty to report those, so most of the figures are showing to be pretty good. Um, we are working with other agencies, which is a core function of the council. One area that we don't have a direct responsibility for, but I think we need to look at doing something with. Um, other agencies where we can, is our unemployment levels, um, a four point six, it's higher than elsewhere. And I think in part is driven by the education, uh, issues in the borough in some of our northern wards. Um, and I think we need to make sure we emphasize these numbers to government and other agencies. To lever in as much support we can, uh, to improve the employment opportunities of residents in the borough. So I think if you look at this document, there's loads of good stuff in there. Um, and I think hopefully residents will go and look at it and go behind this to the documents that. Provide the information on these headline numbers, which come out on a more regularly quarterly basis. And provide a good analysis on a chart as to how we're moving generally against each item. Are we, any comments? Uh, Shane, you're indicating.
Thank you, Joe, mainly to respond to your very, uh, very accurate one on, on skills and. Um, and education and, um, I think this is something we're all very acutely, uh, aware of as, as, as a council, which is one of the reasons it's, it's held to account. Um, you'll be aware, Chair, that, uh, that actually there's a lot of work going on underneath with the skills agenda, um, in this authority. Um, and how we can coalesce some of that work, uh, because it is currently quite. Bitty, if I may say, that, uh, while we have an excellent college in North King College, um, and provide excellent, uh, facilities for. Um, learners in tertiary education, uh, there are skills employers are asking for. That, uh, are required maybe quicker or beyond a sort of two or three year formal qualification. Um, that we need to respond to those emerging needs. And I know some work is being undertaken at the moment to add to work with businesses and in partnership with businesses to make sure. Uh, that happens and, uh, Chair, you'll also be aware that even this very day, the Chancellor announced a youth employment scheme, trying to guarantee. Uh, employment for especially our younger residents to help make sure that education skills is certainly something that's taken forward, so. I think this is a very ti- you know, it's a timely point to make because I think i- it's felt across the country, we need to. Upskill, we need to invest in that, but it also needs to be something they can take with and it's tangible, so it isn't just, uh, you know, uh, it isn't. Creating skills for the employees to just taking use and then dumping something that's transferable and lasts, and lasts really long time. If I may also, Chair, just, I want to just highlight one P I, because it's a brand new one and it's altered from this report and it's P I twenty two about planning enforcement. It's new, it's a new P I because actually this cabinet took a decision to alter this. Because it wasn't actually really reflecting the proper needs of what, the proper work that actually officers were undertaking on planning enforcement. And so it's a new P I, not, and there are, there's data out there, so it isn't, because there isn't any data. But we, we were only really recording the formal sort of almost court cases, which doesn't accurately reflect the work that was going on and there's far more. The lies below that, which as the Chief Executive has said, is now reported to Cabinet Committee and should be accurately reported, uh, moving forward. I'll leave it there, Chair, thank you.
I think that's a key point, and I think education, um, improving the ability of. Plugging into it at all points of our careers and life is going to be important going forward. Um, as I know, for example, many, many, many years ago, when someone would kindly point out to me, when I did it. Um, I, I went on a path of a certain form of, uh, career I thought I would be doing. As I really wanted to do domestic house surveys, that's what I trained for, what I wanted to be and what I wanted to do. And in my entire career, I've done four, um, which I think is a bit of a clue there where. We've got to accept that what you thought you're going to go off on a journey doing isn't necessarily where you end up. And I think all the way through our lives, when you change jobs, roles, career paths. We need to plug into education at all those points. And I think we need to make sure as a community, we're providing that and work with the providers of it. To make sure our work base is as skilled as we can make it to get them all into jobs. Being unemployed isn't a way forward, uh, having no job isn't a way forward, it shouldn't be a career choice. Um, if you can work, you should work because it's better. Um, I think we need to get people into employment that is quality employment, that for which they're trained. So we have a partnership with them, uh, for employment as well. And I think this is what this is highlighting, um, we need to be doing. So great, great report. Karina, as an ex teacher, you have no doubt put me right, um, hopefully, if I'm wrong, but over to you.
Thank you. Um, I was just going to comment that a hundred percent of the apprenticeships secured employment, and that's really testament to the, the work. Uh, the people who take on the apprentices are doing so, that's really great statistic.
Thank you. Any else, anybody else to speak on this one? Any comments? No? So can we note it? Thank you very much. That then takes us to, um, item ten, you've all got a separate, um, report, um, that came outside the papers, but it's a public paper. In respect of Rochefell Board Membership, the recommendations on there set out quite clearly, but, um, but your team, Mr. Joe, please.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Again, I think I'll keep this introduction fairly brief. Um, members will be familiar, um, that the. Previous Director of Housing, Daniel, departed the organization in the summer. Um, Daniel also held a role, uh, as a non-remunerated director of Rochefell Limited, so that leaves a vacancy on that board. The report you have this evening in front of you is seeking authority to replace, um, Daniel there with the Assistant Director for Community Support and Inclusive Growth. Anita Tasso, uh, for those of you familiar, uh, with Anita, because it's felt that she will bring the requisite skill sets to that board. Uh, to take the Rochefell Group of Companies forward, uh, along with the other directors, uh, given where the company structure is at at this moment in time. This report also sets out that, um, ironically, as a result of some, um. Uh, the introduction of the consumer standards within housing, which we referred to earlier by councillor O'Malley. Um, that the Assistant Director for Social Housing, uh, has taken the decision to step down from the Rochefell Property Development Limited Board. Uh, to focus on those consumer standards for the benefits of our tenants, that leaves a vacancy on that board. Uh, and this report seeks delegatory authority to yourself, Chair, um, to work with myself to fill that vacancy. Once a suitable candidate has been identified from within the council's workforce, um, so. Uh, and the Assistant Director for Social Housing will stay on the board until such time as that replacement is found. Thank you.
Okay, again, uh, the recommendations I think are sound and I'll be asking you all to agree and support them in a minute. Um, but I think it is important to say as well that these are companies the council has set up in the last three, four years. Four years, um, from scratch, um, primarily to do the charter, but also they've now moved on to a whole range of other things. Um, they're all proven to be successful, they're all, um, working well for the council and be providing returns back. Uh, which is a very positive thing. Um, but I think for the purpose of the audience who may be watching. It sounds like we're appointing officers to director posts and there's an implied, um, benefit for them of getting. Being a director of your C U R money, um, but that's not the case. All of the directors are volunteering, um, or being volunteered, uh, I, I prefer volunteering. Um, to take opposition on these boards, which does actually mean more stress, more work, more responsibility. Um, and risk for them, had been a director of any company is a risk. But obviously we are mindful of their experience base, how the companies are working, we don't want any company failing. So that risk is being managed and mitigated. That being said, we are asking a lot of officers to do this for no additional benefit. But they're doing it for the council, they're doing it for our residents, and they're doing it because it's the right thing they feel to do. And I think for that, I want to make it public, they don't earn any more money, um, and thank them for what they're doing, all of them. So any, anything else, anybody? So we will be seeking more volunteers shortly, um, and they will come forward, I'm sure, with gusto. Um, are we all happy? Beautiful, thank you. That then takes us to the minutes of the Grecian Joint Transport Board. Um, anything to comment on them? From anybody? Shane?
I will, um, I will briefly, uh, it's only, uh, it's a bit, it's very niche issue, Chair, but it's. It's highlighting there's some disconnect and this is another problem with the J T B, it's a very, it's a ward ba- it's a wall basis on Mark Square, but, um. What it highlights is a bit of a disconnect between G B C and K C C and G B C are completely in the right here, it is what, and this is the reason I'm raising it. Because it was implied that these yellow lines that put in there are because a planning permission was given for yellow lines to put in now. The reason I'm raising it is because of course planning permission can't put in yellow lines and it is a highways matter. Um, and so, uh, for the record, if anything else, Chair, that's, uh, I've been working very closely with our excellent parking manager, Nick May. Um, who's liaising with K C C in this regard, but it's highlighting that sort of a bit of a disconnect that for the record isn't a G B C issue. Uh, but, uh, certainly something that is currently being taken up with K C C. Um, and that should have been accurately reported to J T B by K C C, uh, and has not been. Um, so it's, it's no fault of anyone at the meeting, no fault of anyone else, but there is, there's, there's, there are issues there, so I'm, I'm, I'm merely highlighting that for the record as, of course, they're here for a matter of record.
Thank you. Anybody else on this? No, that's very temporary.
Thank you, Chair, and just for the record, we still do not have a vice chair for this board, K C C is avoiding the issue. For whatever reason and, um. We are pursuing it, but they are just not coming back to us on it, so. And I agree, there is a disconnect with K C C and us on some of the issues that we're raising. Thank you.
I think as, as well, officers, when it, can you press? I think as well, officers, when it's, can you press Kent to uh. Name one of their King County councillors as a vice chair, because it's important they understand the role because potentially. Um it's their role to be chairing it next year, um and we would hope to see the partnership, which is a legal duty to have. To move forward with a proper spirit of togetherness and working together. Um if at the same time you're having that conversation, one area which I know they will push back on and say, actually, it's nothing to do with Gration. Um but it does, in my mind, Gally Hill and the collapse of that road. Um if we can get that onto an an update on our agenda, Joint Transport Board. I know that will be of interest to many people in Gration, um because they traditionally had used that road. Um and if you're going all the way around the other way now, it creates problems on other parts of the network in North Lane. For people having to avoid that road, whereas it should be repaired and open by now, that collapsed many years ago. Um I think we need to have a clear understanding of where the money is coming from and getting on with it. And not leaving residents high and dry, and even if we report to the Joint Transport Board, I think. If officers can go back to Ken and say, look, it does affect us, uh you may not physically be in Gration. But the effect of it affects Gration, um so we need an update, we need to know what's going on. You wouldn't mind, I don't know who's going to do it, but one of you, one of you go back and get it on the papers, please. Yeah. Anything else from anyone? All happy? Thank you very much. That then takes us to item twelve, no other business I've been notified of. Item thirteen would have been exclusion of the public, but they're not here, so it's easy to deal with. Uh partly, there is nothing there, so that's the end of the meeting. Thank you very much, everyone. Good night.